Planning and zoning commission board meeting, January 7th, 2016, 10:00 a.m., Sanford City Hall, City Commission Room.
My name is Jerry Mills. I'm the current chairman of the City of Sanford Planning and Zoning Commission. This is our meeting Thursday, January 7th, 2016, which has been continued from December 3rd, 2015. I've just called the meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, November 5th meeting minutes. We need a motion for approval.
I'm going to approve.
A second. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries. First item is public hearing one. It is quasi-judicial, even though it wasn't listed as so. So, we will ask for commissioner comments if there was any discussions. And I can tell you that Jason Toll was the representative for the applicant, and he and I did have a phone conversation. No big deal. Anyone else? Okay, all right. This is a public hearing to amend an ordinance for the small bay plan development. Eileen, are you going to do that?
I am.
Are you ready?
She is.
I think I am.
Okay. I guess I need to move this a little closer to me, too.
Now I'm ready. Okay, the report was written back in December, so some of the tenses may not make sense, but I'm going to read it anyway. On October 22nd, 2007, the City Commission adopted ordinance 4077 rezoning 251 White Cedar Road to PD for an office warehouse flex space for small bay plan development, subject to a development order number 718, executed on December 7th, 2007, with various conditions agreed to by the property owners noted in the report before you. Pursuant Article 4, Section 4.3G of the Land Development Regulations, the PD rezoning expires after three years from the date of the original approval. The City Commission adopted ordinance 4231 on February 28th, 2011, extending the plan development to December 2nd, 2015, five years beyond the original 2010 expiration. It says, "As the expiration date of December 2nd, you know, has now passed, the applicant submitted a request prior to the expiration to extend that to December 2nd, 2018, noting that the demand for this type of space has not yet returned. The recommendation of staff is that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the request to extend the plan development for three years to December 2nd, 2018."
Questions of staff? Okay, open the public hearing. Mr. Toll, I know you're here to represent the client. Do you have any comments or anything? If you do, step to the podium. Name and address, please.
Jason Toll, 1800 Pembroke Drive, Suite 350 Orlando, 32810. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me. Thank you for seeing me this morning. We support staff's recommendations and are here to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have questions of Mr. Toll? All right. Mr. Toll, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Brevity is wonderful. You're not an attorney, are you? Okay. Sorry, Lonnie. I just had to throw that out.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Open it for commissioner consideration.
Please do. First of all, the document has been corrected. Under recommendation, staff recommends planning and zoning. Mr. Toll, approve the request to extend the small bay plan development. For five, it's been crossed out to three years. So, my motion is based off the three-year recommendation. I recommend the City Commission approve the development order to extend the approval for the small bay plan development for three years to December 2nd, 2018.
I second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion?
I would like to make a few words on discussion. Basically, for staff and for everybody that's here, I was just concerned about things being on the books with the city tied up within the building department, particularly the planning and zoning department. We're extending three years to a application that's not going to start building right away, or is looking to wait until the market improves to start building. And I'm just concerned with the backlog of applicants that the planning and zoning board and building department have on their agenda in terms of just having some transparency and having applicants, holding them accountable for when they do put in an application and don't have any idea when they're going to build. I would like to work with staff, have discussion about it, and having some guidelines, so that applicants can either withdraw the application until the market improves, or go ahead along with the project.
Okay, I would suggest, then, that you proceed with setting up a meeting with Ms. Henson and/or Mr. Gibson, and proceed with ideas on the guidelines, and then report back at our next meeting under commissioners' reports, and tell us what you found. Sound fair enough?
Can I inquire of staff real quickly? In regards to what Eddie is speaking about, I'm under the impression that this has been reviewed. We've gone over, we voted on it. I've actually voted on this one the last time. By continuing it, it actually removes the load from staff, because up through 18, it can come in for permitting based off what's, as long as they live by the parameters. If we were to start kicking these out, then there would be re-applications coming up, which would actually add a greater burden to staff.
That is correct.
Right.
It'd start all over again.
Right. Currently, it's zoned to plan development. If it had been a straight rezoning to something like RI-1, or, you know, MI-2, one of the other industrial zonings, it would just hold its zoning. Because it's a plan development, our code builds in expirations to make sure that old building standards and stuff don't apply. So, this one has a caveat in it that says that they have to build to whatever standards are in place at the time that it's constructed. So, we're just basically continuing the plan development as proposed, subject to them meeting standards at the time that they come in to construct. As you said, it would prevent us from having to take a whole new application at the time they want to build, just to go back to a similar industrial zoning.
Okay, that said...
Yeah, I was just concerned about it in terms of just putting pressure on applicants to go ahead and move forward with the projects. If they have to withdraw, then, of course, they will have to have another application fee, another architect look at it. And it would just put some pressure on these projects, because I'd like to see them go through forward.
Right. Well, that is one of the elements that come along with a plan development. A plan development is a, it's a rezone that was an agreement between the city and the applicant to very certain standards that would otherwise be required of them. So, the plan development is in place as an agreement between, but by putting the expiration in place, it allows the city to not keep things on the books that are really outdated. It allows us to re-review them. Right now, you're looking at it just to see if it's okay to continue the PD as requested, and then, when they come in with development plans, they don't have to re-rezone.
Maybe it's the best of all worlds is to have entitlements available to property owners, so that you can economically develop the city. To have the development, whenever it occurs, which is going to be run by the economy, be built to the highest standards, that's two things. And the third thing is have a periodic review, which is the third thing, which there's an expiration. So, in this situation, you have the best of all worlds, in my judgment. And the only thing that's missing is the economy. And if you guys have control over that, I'd like to know.
I'd like to know.
No, basically, is this normal to like...
Very normal.
Very normal. Three years, five years?
The concern that you have, always a very frustrating thing to planning boards, because you approve something, and you go, where's the mall, or where's the new development? And it's based upon lenders, and economy, and markets, and all that stuff, which, you know, I'm not sure anybody has control over that.
The other thing, in the economy we face right now, this property prior to being changed was just basically cheap dirt. And to attract developers, I wasn't... Less expensive than if it would have been zoned something differently.
Whenever you put entitlements into the property, you're right.
And subsequently, the owner has to get these projects approved, so basically, they can go out and try to sell this to an investor. And until this is in place, and if we were to start taking these entitlements away, then they really have no sellability to investors, because although it was approved prior, there's no guarantee to be approved again. Whereas, right now, they can walk into whatever investor or bank and say, this is already approved. We're ready to, you know, all we're looking for is money. So, in some ways, I think we would be slowing the process down even greater if we started removing them. Other than the fact is, if, you know, in two and a half years, these people have still not started, and that whole property changes to a whole different dynamic, we have the right to say, you've got six months, or guess what, it's gone. So, again, it's the best of all worlds for the city.
Thank you. I just have one quick question of staff. You see the area that's outlined there is all county, and it's almost like an island now. Has there been any discussion, or movement, or desire to annex that into the city?
Not at this time.
Okay, that's this part, folks.
There's a good picture in the back.
All of this, right here.
You show the trees on the back, and really show it. There's just so much empty land right there. That's all it is.
The camphouses up there.
And there's a couple of houses back there.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. Call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Toll.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Thank you, Council. Thank you, planning council.
Happy New Year. Okay, PH 2 is not quasi-judicial. It is a discussion about the land development regulations to establish Schedule G. Ms. Henson.
Okay. Typically, I go through the staff report, but Jordan has a PowerPoint presentation to give you guys a brief overview of if you...
Okay.
It's on screen.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Anywhere?
Hello, Jordan.
We are here to discuss the architectural design standards. The purpose of the standards are to enhance and encourage quality upscale development within the city's commercial districts. And these are just examples of pictures of if the design standards are applied, the type of development that we can possibly get in the future. What's the background? How did we get to this point? We were, staff was requested to enhance and encourage quality upscale development. Architectural standards to create more quality developments was the answer. And then, back in May 13th, 2015, we had a special planning and zoning commission meeting, where we reviewed the architectural design standards. And staff made, reviewed the comments, made the changes, and that's what's before you today. Currently, existing design guidelines are within these, the Schedule Es, Fs, Hs, and there's also multifamily residential developments, design guidelines as well. These guidelines are applied to new construction, renovation, and expansion projects, and also projects adding more than 2,000 square feet, or altering more than 25% of the building facade. Architectural design standards are broken up into five sections, purpose and intent, definitions, office and commercial standards, lighting, and permitted and non-permitted photo library. Section 1 is the purpose and intent, and it includes the application of the design standards, and also the submitted and approval requirements. Section 2 includes the definitions, and this section just has the descriptions as they relate to the schedule and definitions. Section 3, this is the front stuff, office and commercial standards. We have standards regarding building orientation, pedestrian and vehicular circulation, facade definitions, and walkable environments. We also have standards for blank facades, and standards for apparent size of building, and standards for textured building surface. And we have standards for exterior materials and colors. Section 4 deals with lighting. The lighting regulations came from Schedule F, and we also added some. And it was enhanced architecturally compatible with the main structure. So, we took Schedule F, and then we made sure that the lighting standards would be compatible and architecturally, such as the pictures you see there. Section 5 includes the permitted and non-permitted photo library, and it illustrates types of encouraged and prohibited development buildings, such as site design, primary facade standards, secondary facade standards, facade articulation, roofs, service areas, colors and materials. And then, we also made additional modifications. We modified Schedule F, requirements for buildings, parcels, yards, buildings, and setbacks, and lighting. We also modified Article 3, procedures for development approval. That is staff's report.
All right.
And then, the recommendation portion, it says, it says the Florida statute requires the local planning agency to review the proposed land development regulations and make recommendations to the city commission as to the consistency of the changes with the adopted comprehensive plan. Accordingly, staff recommends that the planning and zoning commission recommend the city commission approve an ordinance to adopt the creation of Schedule G and the modifications necessary to Article 3 and Schedule F.
All right. Who's the author of the revised Schedule F?
It's a combination of Jordan and I.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you had told me. Never mind. Okay. And the Schedule F that has all of the lighting stuff in it is eventually going to be weaned out, and it'll all go into Schedule G. Is that what I understand, or did I read it wrong? One in Schedule F will still be residential?
Right now, Schedule G is geared solely toward commercial, retail-type activities. We're going to, you know, introduce the architectural standards into the development plan process. As we develop the land development regulations, we will further incorporate the things that you saw on that list that Jordan showed before, from Schedule E and stuff on the multifamily. And then, we have some other design guidelines in the overlay districts. We're going to try and incorporate them all into one, but right now, we're going to start with just the commercial construction. So, the lighting that's in F refers you to this on the relevant buildings, and then, it still has to apply for the multifamily developments and other related developments with parking lots and such on site.
Okay. I will tell you all that in my overview of this, I found several things, which I'm really not going to go through. They're very minor, and I believe that they'll probably be taken care of. There was one, just as a for instance, where it said a minimum overhang of three feet. Well, that means you can go out 50 feet if you want for an overhang. So, that was supposed to be maximum. Just two or three things like that. So, as the one that sort of promoted this and was very, very happy, I didn't have to be too heavily involved. Jordan, Eileen, and whoever else on staff worked with this did a fantastic job. So, if I could make a motion, I would. But I will open it up for commissioner comments at this time. Or a motion.
I move to find that the proposed new Schedule G to the land development regulations and the modifications to Article 3 and Schedule F regulations are consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan, and recommend the city commission approve the proposed documents and enact the new and revised land development regulations.
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. One thing I would like to show in the minutes for the record. Ma'am, you're a city employee, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you Ms. McCabe?
No.
No?
Ms. Harkey.
Oh, okay. All right. I would like for, in the minutes of the record, to show that there was no one from the public, developers, interested citizens, or anything, that were here to say anything about this. So, we've brought this up. It's been published. It's been in several meetings, and we have had no public input whatsoever. So, therefore, let it be. Yes, sir.
First of all, there's a few edits, like you said, that I need to make, too, as I was reading it yesterday again.
Okay.
Will not be substantive, I promise. It'll just be technical things. But I don't know if you guys understand how, what you just did. I'm going to say it, since nobody else is here to say it, because up until, up until this point in time, the answer to questions, and I'm recalling one of the last times I was sitting up here, and it was a top, was it Dollar General, or something? And a Dollar General was being proposed for approval. And the question arose, why does Sanford only get the plain vanilla off the shelf of proposals from these types of developers? And the reason is, because you, unlike other jurisdictions...
Didn't have any guidance.
You have no standards. You just took the first step to have standards, and to have that question, if it was asked again, to be answered differently, because you do have standards, and you're not going to get the plain vanilla, and you are going to have architects review. And that's a big deal. You guys just did a big thing. I don't know if you appreciate how big you did.
I do.
You just did a big thing.
Yeah.
And I think Jerry instigated it months ago, or a year ago, and applauding for it. It's one of the main reasons I got on this commission, was to see our city move forward in the right direction, and have some type of a say-so on that. I went through this revision and guidelines. I'm sure not to the extent that Jerry did, but I also rely on him and Steve to kind of handle a lot of the detail-oriented aspects of what we do. But I did go through it, and I agree with exactly what you say. And I think this is a great move, and I'm very happy to be a part of it.
The proof of its significance will be in how it works.
Yeah, exactly.
I would like to second what Mike just said about Jerry. Jerry, you've done a hell of a job on this. And at the same time, as a builder, what I like about it the most is is that when you look at the jurisdictions that make up the seven, the cities of Seminole County, we are putting stuff in to protect the city of Sanford, yet we're still being fair to the people who want to develop, a little more than some of the other jurisdictions. So, although we will be raising our bar up to where we want it to be to reflect the changes in our city, it's still going to be inviting, because it's still better than the one just south of us, you know? And it's a little easier and a little more manageable, because in dealing with the different jurisdictions, some of them are just impossible and way more restrictive than the document that was just approved. And again, Jordan, Eileen, and the gang, I mean, hey, it's a new year. It's a hell of a way to start.
I move that we have a round of applause for Eileen and Jordan. And Lonnie, you took a lot of time in reading it and reviewing it, and making sure that we weren't doing anything that was going to be challenged, hopefully.
Federal courts.
Yeah. So, okay. Well, I know it's, you know, we don't have champagne to pop a cork or anything, but let's just hope that City Commission finds the same value, and that Mr. Groot will be at that meeting, too, and he will, you know, wave our flag again. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the PH 3, also not a quasi-judicial matter. It is concerning regulations to modify Schedule J, landscape buffer and tree requirements. Eileen?
Okay. Schedule J, landscape buffer and tree requirements, has been modified to improve the city's enforcement of tree maintenance and preservation. The planning department worked with the parks department to try and make some upgrades to Schedule J. They had, well, I'll read the background. It says, "In March of 2014, the City Commission approved Resolution 2461, authorizing a grant application for the 2014 National Urban and Community Grant Program. The grant included an opportunity to provide accurate tree information, specific locations of tree species, and horticultural heritage, and electronic maintenance of data. The resolution also authorized administrative actions necessary to implement provisions of the grant program agreement, which included the ability to refine the land development regulations as may be needed to establish new requirements and penalties." So, the Parks and Grounds divisions reviewed the current regulations with the Assistant City Attorney, and the regulations have been modified to meet the provisions of the grant. So, the changes before you are for the purpose of the grant to add penalties and upgrade our ability for maintenance and installation of the appropriate landscaping, and to keep the city tree beautiful. So, if you have any questions, we do have our arborist here regarding what some of the changes and the purposes are, as well as the attorney who they worked with.
So...
As with the other one, the Florida statutes requires you to review the proposed changes, and accordingly, staff recommends the planning and zoning commission recommend the city commission approve an ordinance to adopt the proposed amendments.
Okay. Ms. Harkey, why don't you step up to the podium and introduce yourself to us, please?
Okay. Elizabeth Harkey, and I'm the urban forester for the city of Sanford. And I pretty much just watch over our trees on the right-of-way, and our parks. We don't do private property. But we did a tree inventory in 2006, and the one we're doing now, money-wise, we're only able to do about a third. We just completed, basically, the historic area. And I'm proud to say that in the report, the city of Sanford trees are, compared to other cities, our trees are really in very good condition and have been well-maintained. So, I was really pleased about that. I think with the ordinance, there's other things we want to include in it at a later date, but we, with the requirements of the grant, which is due in the end of March, we had to show some type of a revision. And this one, I think, pretty much, Lonnie, if I'm correct, is kind of targeting the utilities, because I don't know if you've noticed, a lot of trees with the big cutouts with the...
How can you not?
And a lot of that is federally regulated, and we can't really dictate a lot. But at least, this will help. And I've already seen improvement with them calling me, and we have a better dialogue, and I'm going out and meeting with them. And a lot of times, we can make revisions where, especially in our parks, we don't have to really mutilate some of the trees because of the power lines. So, you know...
They do. They are into mutilation. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah. And, you know, everybody's got to have power, and so, we have to, we have to work with them, and they're... and there are guidelines as far as the transmission and distribution lines, the distance, especially after the hurricanes in '04, you know, I've been to a lot of classes where they said, after '04, their one tree went down like in Jacksonville, and it put a power outage out through the transmission lines all the way to Miami.
Good lord.
One tree. So, it is important, you know, what they do, but we try to preserve our trees too, you know, so.
I think the only, the only question that I have is, is something that's not in here under shrubs, or understory trees, or anything like that, that I've planted quite a bit of, and I live in the city limits, and I'm very, very proud of, is bamboo. Are you all planting, I know it's a grass, but, you know, it grows up to be a tree.
Well, it depends on what type of bamboo. There are new species out, I know, but there, I believe there are, there are certain types of bamboo that are on the invasive list.
Yes.
And it will take over, so that, I don't think that would be something that we would really recommend.
Okay, as I understand it, the last, when I did the research before I bought mine, there are something like 1,250 varieties, but there's two major divisions, one you want and one you don't want. The clumpers are the ones you want, and the runners are the ones you don't want. And rather than not having it in here, I'm thinking that there should be some information in there that makes sure that people understand that there truly is a separation, and there are some that are fine, they do produce a lot of oxygen, and they are wonderful for producing visual barriers.
A buffer, yes. But that's something we could-
I have 24 of them, and they're all clumpers.
I mean, one instance is like, it's a plant, the Mexican petunia, is one that's on the list, but there are new varieties out now that don't reproduce and don't get in our, you know, woods and reproduce.
Plant called the Mexican petunia, that is a bamboo?
No, no, but that's one that's on the invasive list, but what happens is, the big-box stores, they still sell a lot of things that are on the invasive list, that, you know, they shouldn't be. Camp for trees, I think.
And geckos, and-
Exactly.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions of Ms. Harkey?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Okay, I'll, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf in favor or against this public hearing application? Seeing none, close the public hearing, open it up for Commissioner comments. Let's try to do it all right.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion, if you are.
I move to recommend the City Commission approve the proposed amendments to the Land Development Regulations to Schedule J, landscape buffer and tree requirements.
A second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda does not show, but it's staff reports, and Russ wanted to talk about the, thank you, Ms. Harkey.
Thank you very much.
Wanted to talk about the possible rescheduling of our February 4th meeting to February 11th. I don't remember why. You know, I just looked at my calendar, oh, yes, we're, we would be without Mr. Root, and I believe there's one item on the agenda, and we may wanna have him here for that, so. Anybody have any negative comments about switching it from the 4th to the 11th?
I can't make it, the, on a second Thursday, I have a company meeting I have to attend, so.
Okay, all right. Anyone else?
Yes, just for clarification, Mr. Root won't be able to attend this 4th?
That's correct.
Okay, and we need him at the meeting?
It would be good to have him there.
Okay.
Oh, this February 11th, correct?
Yes, sir. 2016.
Yeah.
I don't have my calendars, I'll let you tell, but.
Can't tell.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, I'll be here.
Sorry, John. It's like, okay, we'll go ahead and schedule that meeting for February 11th then. Okay, under Commissioner Reports, I do have one thing that has been in my craw for quite some time, and you all have a copy of it?
Yes, we do.
Does Mr. Root have a copy of it?
I have, I have a college.
Okay. The problem are the full bags of garbage being left in the roadways and run over. The cause, I spoke to an apartment dweller and was astounded to find out that people put, people that are in apartment complexes, a lot of times, will put the bags on the trunk of their car to drive up to the front where the dumpsters are. Sometimes they forget. Then they get on 46 or wherever, get up to speed, the bags fall off, and then other people run over it, so.
Two or three times a week.
I didn't wanna just want and complain, I wanted to have some solution. So the solutions are to notify all apartment complex owners of the situation. Maybe the city could prepare some flyers and send them to the apartment complex owners explaining the problem, and the complex owners be required to distribute to existing residences and to all incoming renters. I would love to see fines. We used to have signs on the road that set up to $1,000 fine for littering. I don't recall having seen any of those recently, but they may still be there, I don't know. And, you know, we have speed traps, maybe once in a while, if a police officer is sitting outside an apartment complex as a trash trap, maybe they could actually catch somebody doing that. You know, I go to the gym early in the morning, and I'm astounded to see how many times that there's, the bags are there that haven't been hit yet, so they've been out kinda early, but I've never seen one happen, because I'm gonna do a-
Citizen.
Citizen's arrest. I would, I am just so angry about that, because the city works very, very hard to keep our city looking great, and this is just a real slap. And as the city grows and we approve more apartment complexes, I don't want it to get worse, I want it to get better. So fines are established by the city, with certain officers assigned to man the trash Not only would we, once it's proven, not only could we find the individual, but maybe we could find the complex owners too, who might work a little harder to make things happen. And as I understand it, apartment complex owners are supposed to take care of trash even outside in front of their complexes.
That would not, that wouldn't be the roads themselves, though, that would be-
That's what I'm thinking, but that's what I was told yesterday. If the trash trap cannot be justified financially, assign city employees to gather a drop bag as quickly as possible to sift through for ownership. Now, as it, as it does stand, if you do call the solid waste department and say, "I see a bag such and such place," and I didn't know this, you call them, and they will get somebody out almost immediately. So, I don't have that number, can, Mary, can you give us that number or send it out in the minutes, so that we can all do that?
Has the number with the city or with the solid waste company?
It's the city's solid waste manager. Has city staff go out and clean it up.
Cool.
Okay? All right. So, I've stated the problem, I've stated the cause, I've stated solutions, but Lonnie, I have no idea what to do from this point.
Well, I thought Ms. McCabe was gonna be here, and I just emailed her to ask if she was coming down, because I thought that was what the plan would be, but apparently not. We can pass these on, I mean, there's some issues about the fines and all that, because of, you know, limitations of law and the franchise agreement and all that.
Gotta start somewhere.
But, no, we can look at it, but, I'll tell you what, I'll get with Ms. McCabe myself about this.
Okay. I just don't want it to be something that I've spent some time on and have stress points with, and then it just goes away.
No, I will promise you, I will get with Ms. McCabe and report back to you the next meeting.
Okay, then I would like to have on the next meeting, an update on litter.
And-
Yes, sir.
And some-
And including with that, if we can include some communication with law enforcement, because if we're gonna have them involved in the process, see what they can do, especially since Chairman's idea had to do with the speed traps and possibly including law enforcement in the process. Because what I'm finding is, not only the trash bags, Chairman, but I'll sit at a light and I'll see someone just open their door and dump their trash in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
And it astounds me that people do that, but it's a regular occurrence.
And you challenge them, and your lawyer gets shot.
Right.
No, you don't challenge them, that's silly.
Right, so, so I'd like to hear what law enforcement can do. I don't wanna, you know, make their jobs harder, but it is a major issue, and I think it needs to be addressed.
And it's just so unnecessary.
Yeah.
I mean, it really, really is. Okay.
My comment.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'll go first. First, on the apartment complex side of it, I think we could start, as a solution, we could start from our planning and zoning and plan approval process. When we, when a developer builds a building, he's gotta put signs up that say FDC connection. They've gotta put signs up that say this, they say that. I think one of the things that should be required, if the complex does not provide door-to-door pickup of trash, and the disposal of rubbish has to be dumped at a dumpster enclosure, compactor, at the, near or near the entrance of the thing, all apartment complexes should be required to have signs directly on the stop signs that say, "Remember your trash." So as you drive out, you have a little reminder that says, "Remember your trash." As you get closer, you still see the signs, it's not gonna stop it, but it's gonna make people keep thinking, "Oh, hell, my trash is on my truck."
Okay, will you add that in, please, Lonnie, in your discussion?
I just think that's a weakness, as a control point, on the front side. It's gonna cost them $500 to put signs all over, depending on the size of it. We had a new apartment complex that's proposed for behind a new 7-Eleven on Reinhardt. That's a terrible place if we have waste falling all over, because it sets a focal point for people coming to Sanford with the restaurants and everything else.
Right.
The enforcement of fines, I see the biggest issue with that is, car drives out of your apartment complex, the car, the bag flies off, somebody gets the license number, all you got is a license number. Until you can prove beyond a shadow of a doubt who was driving that car, you can't issue a fine to a car.
Well, depends on what's in the bag. You know, if there's a letter, an envelope.
But then, "Oh, I had my neighbor take it out, it wasn't me that took my trash out." I mean, I think we have to start further back in the process to try to get people aware that, "Hey, don't forget your trash."
Just make it a requirement, they put their trash bag on the hood of their car.
Put it in their passenger seat. Okay.
Something else, something else with the signs, the number to pick it up, too. If you see it on the road, to call and get it, I mean, not just-
In other words, provide all the apartment complexes with the city pickup number.
I was gonna say, for the, on the side of the road, too. I mean, it's so another-
Any unsighted trash, dial this number.
Yeah.
But that's gonna, oh, man.
Adding more signs.
Somebody's gonna shoot us.
I'm ready to be shot.
Oh, good seeing you.
I'm really tired of it. Okay, that'll be on the agenda for next, next time, so, next item on the agenda.
I'm sorry, can we have the record reflect that I did come in to the meeting? I don't know if you all-
We didn't vote. We didn't do roll call.
Okay. I was trying to make sure I didn't get any unexcused accents.
You got it, you got it, Tony.
Eddie, are you sure you don't wanna be here for just about two more minutes? It's time to make a nomination for Chair and for Vice Chair. Okay. Do I have nomination for Chairperson, please?
I think you're doing good.
No, thank you. I promised last year that I, if you let me do it one more year, I'll still be here, but it's time to pass it over.
Mr. Essler?
Just pass it to Steve.
Is that a nomination?
I nominate Steve.
Okay. We have a nomination, do we have any others? Okay, call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Do we have a second to that?
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, am I doing everything according to Robert's rules? Okay. Then nomination for Vice Chair?
Ms. Mills.
Let's let someone else have an opportunity.
Lindsay, you don't wanna do it?
I'm fine, thank you.
I nominate Mike Loder.
Oh, Mike?
Okay. We have a nomination, are there any others? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Eddie did, okay. Let's have a vote then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Thank you for staying, Eddie, your excuse is okay. And all I wanna, all I wanna say is that, you know, I'm here, and until when, Mary? Do I expire?
You never expire.
Huh?
Today.
No, oh, I'm gonna die today.
Hold on, Roger.
But my, my role on the-
Give me a brow.
As Chairperson ends today.
Yes.
With your signature.
Okay, all right. So, but what I mean is, is my tenure on the board, on the commission.
You're still here.
You're still at it.
I don't know when. I don't know when.
Okay, I think it's like 2019. The point being is, is that if in the future, I might consider another year sometime down the road, if, if you guys really don't like Steve, and, you know. But anyway, so, thank you all very much, I have no speech or anything like that, so it just needs to be done, and I will be reviewing the agendas and the stuff. Steve, you do know that every Wednesday afternoon before the meeting, I meet with Eileen and Russ, to avoid the cold cock syndrome, when we, when we come in for the meeting. From time to time, I take our, our city attorney to lunch, but sometimes he pays, so it equals out. He is there for seeking information, right? Okay. So, and Russ and Eileen have also been kind enough to tell me I can call, email, or come in anytime I have questions about it, so I presume that that's open to all Commissioners as well.
Can I ask one question?
Only one.
Okay, it's, I guess to Lonnie.
With Schedule G, it says, Schedule J, that we voted on and approved today, it now goes to City Commission for final approval? My question is, is that if the city gavels it approved, does it have to go to, again-
For a second reading?
Second, second reading. Once it goes through the whole process and assuming it gets approved, when would the jurisdiction of these schedules go into effect?
Now. Immediately. Immediately upon the-
So basically, nothing, anything that's not in-house, in process with P&amp;Z, with planning and zoning, would have to-
Even in process?
That's always an issue. Typically, applications that are, have gone substantially into the process are evaluated with prior codes, is their best, basically. But if an application is submitted the day before, or hasn't even begun the process, a new code's getting filed.
Or we have an extension like we have here today, and they have to need to start a development, yeah, and-
Yeah, development, yeah.
And specifically in the DOD, right?
Right. Okay.
All right.
Everybody all set?
We are all set.
Can I, maybe two or three minutes, and then I just want to tell you about the reason I feel in front of the City Commission that we have to make an HPV decision. There's some teaching points there, that, you know, you may find interesting, you may not, but I think it's important to sort of cross-breed information, you know, so that y'all know what's going on. And the first point, and I don't know if y'all know this or not, Schedule S, which is the H, Historic Preservation Code, is a zoning code, it's not a building code. You can have a building that's totally built perfect, best construction in the world, but it doesn't comply with zoning, and that's your issue with Schedule S. Schedule S is a zoning code. The teaching points on the appeal are, is first of all, it's an appeal, just like, it could be an appeal from your body, that's the, that's what's going on, actually, the HPV. It's a de novo hearing, so it means whatever happens at the lower level is interesting, helpful, should be respected in terms of the comments, but it's a de novo hearing, so it can be, and I don't mean this in a negative way, ignore it, okay? And the last teaching point is that there, we've talked about this before, there has been some indication of interest for board members to speak in front of the City Commission, and the legal advice was dumped, you know, once again, you get to vote, so that's not your place anymore. And so those are all, in my judgment, pretty good things that, first of all, to know about the fact that this is occurring, and second of all, those are all good teaching points which are sort of applicable to you in some time- which are sort of applicable to you in some, in some respects, too. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I thought it might be helpful.
And before we conclude, I just wanna quickly thank you for the articles and information that you send on a regular basis, it has enhanced my knowledge of planning and zoning issues immensely, getting that information from you on a regular basis, and I do read them, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
You just press forward.
Some of them can be obvious.
You now have so much standard stuff in your typical email that I have to search for what it is you're really trying to tell me.
Did you promise you don't believe anything I say? No.
Haven't seen that one yet.
Could you put the text that you're trying to convey in purple letters, so he doesn't see it, that thing, you know, I don't know.
I'm colored by incident, you might not have heard.
That's true, you have a wrong button.
Okay, my final meeting as Chairman is hereby adjourned.